I'd like to call to order the Village Board Regular Meeting of June 27, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Village Clerk Simmski, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Gunther.
Present.
The Clerk is here. Trustee Haddington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Sinica.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Village Engineer Nicole.
Here.
Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
That's everybody. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go to open forum, I'm going to ask our attorney to please give his report first, and I know there's a lot of individuals may be here because it's on the agenda for under his report, so please, John, if you would.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The reason this is on the agenda, as you know, from time to time, I give you legislative updates as to bills that have been recently enacted or bills that are in the pipeline that may impact municipalities. That's the purpose of this. You've probably seen the press that the state legislature passed a concealed carry law, which is awaiting the governor's signature, which has to be signed by July 9 or vetoed, and that veto overridden by July 9. And that bill, if approved, would allow for concealed carry of handguns as defined in the act by individuals throughout the state. And that's pursuant to Supreme Court, a Supreme Court ruling that Illinois must comply or enact this law. I just want to, one, bring that to your attention, two, let you know that there are certain exceptions to the concealed carry law, because I figure that may be a question you may ask. Can someone bring a concealed carry handgun into Village Hall? Can they bring it to parks? Can they bring it to a public gathering where a permit's been issued? And there are several exceptions or prohibitions to the concealed carry law that the legislature has set out. I gave you kind of a distilled list tonight of those. It also includes things like libraries, schools, et cetera. You can look through that list. Aside from that, I think one potentially controversial issue in the legislation is reference to municipalities and assault and an assault weapons ban, saying that if any communities wish to enact an assault weapons ban, they have to do it within 10 days after passage of the state law. The village has no intention of passing an assault weapons ban. I know the mayor has no intention of passing such a law. The police chief is not in support of such a law. I have not heard that any trustees are in favor of passing such a law. I question whether, as a non-home rule municipality, the village has the authority to pass a law like that, because there's not a specific state grant of power to non-home rule municipalities to enact an assault weapons ban. Moreover, there is a likelihood that if communities start enacting assault weapon bans, that there's this 10-day period that probably get dragged into litigation over whether it's constitutional or not. So, again, this is not a voting item by any means. It's under my reports just to provide a legislative update to the board, let you know that there is that assault weapons ban language, which is a bit confusing, and I've heard several other municipalities chime in questioning whether or not home rule municipalities like Westmont could even consider it. Just one other point, and this is maybe for the benefit of the public, who I know is monitoring either Westmont or other communities as to what they may or may not do, for fear that this board may say something publicly and pull a fast one and vote on something like this down the line. If the village board were ever to vote on something like this, the Open Meeting Sac requires that it be placed on an agenda at least 48 hours in advance, posted publicly and posted on our website. So, there would be advanced public notice, but, again, I guess the intention is to provide this update and give assurances to the public unless I hear otherwise from the board that, you know, no action's going to be taken by the village on this issue, other than I'll let you know what the governor does or does not do.
Thank you.
Do you want the chief to?
Yeah, I think the chief perhaps wanted to make a couple comments also on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, John. It was asked if I could give a recommendation to the board on this issue, and I'd like to read it to make sure that there's no misunderstanding. This is a matter or an issue best left for the state and federal legislatures to address and not for local governments such as ours. For this issue, there needs to be uniformity, which is best addressed at the state and federal level. This issue would be decided by local units of government. This can create confusion, because the litigation may differ from community to community, and that is not my recommendation or I would feel would be recommended. My recommendation is this issue should be decided by our state and federal legislatures to avoid the circumstances which I just described. Additionally, the bill has not been approved or voted on by our governor. I saw a news article, or I saw a news video thing this morning, and he said, "Watch the next couple days, you'll see." Those were his words, the reporter, thereabouts. So, even I wondering and taking any action at this time may be premature, because we don't have the actual legislation in front of us to consider. And as Attorney Zemanek mentioned, the issue of litigation should also be considered. My opinion that the village enacts any legislation, it may be challenged in court. I've spoken to chiefs in other communities, and Sean has mentioned as well too, and most of the chiefs are taking this position. Most organizations are not taking any stance on this issue at this time.
Thank you. And again, the attorney, and I know it says this under his report, his job is to keep us informed, not only on this issue, but any other issue that may come before us, so I appreciate him updating us on it, and I think it's very obvious, our position on it. Thank you, chief. At this point, we would go into open forum, and I can ask Clerk Simmski to please read off the ones that came in.
First up is Sharon Lockhart.
I'm addressing the closure of Cass Avenue between Irving and Norfolk on Thursday evenings for the next couple of months. I'm representing, actually, Dr. David Mays, an optometrist at Dr.'s Lockhart and Mays at 136 North Cass Avenue. In addition to providing general optometric care, Dr. Mays provides care to patients with special needs, very young children, infants, and the elderly. Eliminating the use of the two parking spaces in front of the practice on Thursdays between, and this is unclear to me, whether it's 3 and 9 or 5 and 9:30, will make it difficult for patients carrying car seats, for special needs patients in wheelchairs, and with assistive technology devices. The closing of Cass between either 3 and 9 or 5 and 9:30 on Thursdays between Irving and Norfolk will definitely negatively impact these patients. Many of these patients return weekly for vision therapy, so they have a set time every week. This action, which impacts so many, not just Dr. Mays' practice, but all of the businesses, deserves more extensive consideration. Perhaps a poll to elicit feedback from those affected by this closure is in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. If I can call, I mean, another open forum was Larry McIntyre, and I know that, Dr. Lockhart, I had an opportunity to read an email from Dr. Mays concerning this today, and I asked Larry if he could take the time to go see Dr. Mays today, and I think he has.
Yes. I want to thank Dr. Lockhart for her comments, and they have a great business and have been in the town for decades, so definitely want to work with all of our downtown businesses. This is something that has kind of come up fast with the success of Westmont Street Fair just over the last three weeks. Immediately, we recognized that for us to continue the growth that we've experienced thus far, we were going to need to make a plan to expand the layout a little bit, and of course, that's on the agenda later today as well. But anyway, that plan that we're going to discuss tonight is to expand it from Irving to Norfolk from 5 to 9. And so, the closure would begin at 5. The thought is, is that the main area from Burlington to Irving would fill up between 4 and 6, and once that fills up, then it would continue northbound and grow the event. We did go around to all of the businesses on that block, the 200 block of North Cass, on Tuesday, and hand-delivered notices and talked to every business owner that was available. And we did drop things off at the office. And then additionally, we sent out an email yesterday, and I believe that's maybe when Dr. Mays had first seen that communication. But I was able to get up there today and talk with Dr. Mays directly, and once I better understood his situation of possibly having some customers who needed better access to their front door, I think we can accommodate that absolutely. He let me know that typically, if they're completely booked from 5 to 9, that would be a total of four patients during that time, and if any people needed direct access to their front door, we would make sure that we would basically give them valet, personal parking right to the front door. And so, that's the way that we would like to be able to try to accommodate that, and I'll talk more about the other items on the agenda.
Thank you. It'll be on the agenda. We'll call you back up.
Sure.
Thank you. We do have one final open forum request. For Simmski?
I'm sorry. It is Joseph Kurensik. I was talking to the managers.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hearn Surick, and I'm speaking tonight just as a private citizen. I watched the debate on the restaurant tax that you recently imposed, and I applaud you for making that tough decision. Now, I'll tell you why. We have to make up the lost income that we lost because of the elimination of home rule. And I, as you say, the state does not allow many choices, so you took the best choice out of a bad situation. I would like to tell our restaurants that my family regularly spends between $15 and $100 on Sunday night for dinner, and a buck and a half, 50 cents to a dollar and a half, is not going to impact my choice of restaurant. Even if I were doing a catering where it might come to $15 or $30 on a $1,000 or $2,000 bill, that's not going to influence my choice of restaurant. What does influence is the quality of the food, the presentation of the food, and the consistency of the food. If somebody gives you a raviata sauce instead of a marinara sauce, which is a big difference in flavor, one might actually say that one would be disappointed, or doesn't provide enough gravy to wet the mashed potatoes that comes with a meal. Things like that have more of an influence, or the cheese on a pizza. So, basically, to the restaurants, I say, "I'm not going to go to Downers Grove or to Lombard or somewhere to save 15 cents or even $15." And I just wanted to say that, and thank you, gentlemen, for facing up to the situation.
Gentleman and lady.
Hey, wait a minute, Joe.
Lady, too.
Wait a minute, Joe. Gentleman?
Yes.
I'm kidding you. I'm teasing you.
At this point, we'll go to reports under the mayor report. I'd like to call the two chiefs. I think I lost one of them, but I have the fire chief, Dave, and the police chief is coming back in. We have a special recognition for one of our fabulous volunteers who has been with us for a number of years. We finally got her here to actually recognize her, and I think I'll let the chiefs do the rest of the talking.
For both those of us who know Dawn, and don't know Dawn, this is Dawn King, and for the public who don't know her and those watching on TV.
Everybody knows her.
Dawn is a prior recipient of the Westmont Citizen of the Year Award, and since receiving that award, I don't know if that energized her even more or invigorated her even more, but she volunteers even more than she did before that award. For us in the police and fire service, Dawn has been our right hand when it comes to anything with volunteers, with anything to do with special events around the police department, with the Westmont Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Not a day would go by, and I can definitely say that, you know, she would not say, "I have a suggestion for this and a suggestion for that," and it always made it better. The squad car nights, I think, is near and dear to her heart, and is probably the one event that she likes working on the most, and this year, Dawn did it all herself. She would, she didn't even come to me and ask me for permission on any of it, but she just went and did it. It was just walking, "You're doing this and you're doing that," and I will tell you, Dawn is one of the very few people that I never say no to. And so, in talking with Chief Wise, and I'll let Dave will talk about the fire side of this, we all just want to say thank you and appreciate you for all that you've done for us, you've done for me and the police department, and I would say for probably this entire board. You look up in my mind, you look up the word volunteer in the dictionary, and you should find Dawn's picture. And she used to work at the Westmont Rehabilitation and Nursing Home. Did I say it right? And they loved her as much as we do. So, with that, Dave and I got together, and I'll let Dave tell you all the good things about Dawn, and then what we decided to do. All right, chief, thank you. Yeah, I too, even though Dawn's majority of her volunteer time is with the police department, she has done a lot at the fire department also, and she has given me a lot of good ideas and suggestions and direction on how to create special programs and do special things, and I do appreciate that, and it's definitely benefited the fire department and the village so much. So, Tom and I, this last year, started thinking about, how can we recognize Dawn, and so we decided to create the first-time-ever Public Safety Lifetime Volunteer Award. And this reads, "The certificate is awarded to Dawn King in recognition of many years of dedicated volunteer service to the Westmont Fire Department and Westmont Police Department. This was awarded on the 20th day of June 2013, signed by the police chief and myself." The special thing about this is that Tom and I have decided that after this year, this award will be given out every year after this, and the title will be changed to Dawn King Public Safety Volunteer Award. And so, this award's going to be named after Dawn, and it'll be given to a volunteer that participates and helps both the police and fire department every year. So, Dawn, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know me. Hello podium. I have to thank the mayor for getting Dawn here. It's been a labor of love for Dave and I trying to get Dawn to a public event here at the Village Hall for the last six months to give her this award. We kept on changing the date and the award for the next meeting, and she would conveniently have an excuse or somehow not make it to the meeting. And after we gave this award to her at squad car night, Mayor Gunther also approached her and congratulated her, and also asked her to come here tonight. And I know that if Dave and I had asked her, the answer would have been, "No, I'm not being here," so, "Mayor, thank you."
Thank you so.
I would make you get by the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Thank you so, so much. I really appreciate this. This is on behalf of all of the volunteers. We are so lucky in Westmont to have an amazing, amazing police and fire departments. They truly go above and beyond for our community. More importantly, over the years, I have been rewarded so many times. A young man that I worked with at the Ponds, what, 11 years ago, came up to me and said, "I just graduated college. You made a difference when you tutored me at the Ponds." Can't put a price on that. Community member who came in, we had a first aid class, a special class, at the fire department, came and said to me, "You saved my life. You taught me something in that class that saved my life. If you come to squad car night and fire department night, or the kids' safety camp, or any of the community programs, watch the police and the fire interact with our community members." Their special response and the difference that they make in the lives of our community members is so important, both for the safety of this community. So, this reward is just a bonus for me. I've been paid back many, many, many times. I appreciate them, love them both, and every community member should say thank you to both the police and the fire departments.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under my next item, I report the 4th of July celebration is a week away, and that celebration is a total community celebration. Both the village and the Park District are sponsors of that. I'd like to call Larry McIntyre, who's our special events and public relations coordinator, to kind of give an overview and maybe some information about next Thursday.
Absolutely. Thank you. First and foremost, we need to recognize the Westmont Auto Mile. Without their generous sponsorship, the fireworks would not exist, and they've been underwriting the fireworks for the past several years. So, need to do a little plug. If you're shopping for a new or used car, you need to come to Westmont, you need to go to Ogden Avenue and drive around. You'll definitely see lots of choices, but you can also go to westmontautomile.com. But anyway, they're our sponsor, and it results in the best fireworks in the Chicagoland area. Time after time, when people come to this event, especially the first-time folks who have visited other people's fireworks, other communities, it's almost 100% people walk away and say that ours are the best, and that's rewarding to hear. And so, if you have never been to the Village of Westmont's 4th of July fireworks spectacular, you should definitely come. But anyway, it's always on July 4. This year's Thursday, and activities begin at 4:00 PM, and we have live music, there's food vendors, there's beverages, and we have things like Cutest Baby Awards and things like that, Barnyard Bingo. We definitely want to make sure you get out there for all those activities. But as mentioned, it's co-hosted by the village and the Park District. They work together to coordinate and put it all together. One of the things that we definitely want to let residents know to pay attention to is that we alter the traffic patterns around Ty Warner Park during the event. And so, if you're up there for the first time, or even if you've been there before, just pay attention to the traffic patterns, because they are different than usual, and you'll see signage that will get you around the park. Also, for folks who are coming from Oakwood, I believe we close off the intersection of, is it Blackhawk and Chestnut?
Yes.
And is that 9:00 PM approximately?
For foot traffic, we'll extend it all the way to 9:25, but for vehicle traffic, we basically cut Chestnut off about 8:30.
8:30.
Yeah.
So, at 8:30, we want to make sure residents are aware that they cannot get through that intersection at that time, and then even pedestrian traffic at 9:25. And the reason for that is, is because that's close proximity to where the fireworks are being shot off from. So, we want to, it's completely a safety issue, and so we are definitely hopeful that our Oakwood residents are aware of that and make sure that they don't get trapped in that. And I think that's basically it.
Pretty much fireworks at 9:30.
9:30, dusk, which is always about 9:30.
You want me to finish?
Sure.
I need to thank the Marriott and Willacrest for the use of their property, for the high aerial ones, and we shoot the lower ones off on Ty. There's adequate parking. The parking is at junior high and high school, which is like three to five blocks away. Parking around the park will fill up probably by 5:36, and there's adequate handicap parking. We designated that off of Burr Oak and Chestnut, and it's well-marked. And we provide transportation. We have two carts that'll drive and bring in anybody who needs assistance during the event, so.
And it's appropriate that Mayor Gunther finishes that, because he's been working on it for years and definitely takes the lead in making that all happen, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Stay up there, Larry. Larry, now, he has my third item, is the introduction of the WRA, the Westmont Renaissance Alliance members.
Right.
So, you're on again.
Sure. A few years back, Mayor Bill Ron had met with different residents who were interested in getting more involved with the community, and he pulled them together and organized a couple of meetings, which I would kind of refer to as a focus group. And he sort of had a very general, semi-ambiguous agenda in terms of talking about the downtown. How do we improve the downtown? And several residents from the community came to those meetings, shared their ideas, had a lot of enthusiasm, and over the course of several meetings, they evolved naturally into their own group, and they became the Westmont Renaissance Alliance. And the president right now is Jason Picard, so I'd like to introduce Jason and Linda Little, who are board members, to talk about what the Westmont Renaissance Alliance has been up to recently.
Hello, and thank you for having us and for that introduction, Larry. As Larry said, I'm Jason Picard, and on behalf of the Westmont Renaissance Alliance, Linda is one of our founders here with me. And when we got together, there was about five or six of us who really came together and loved Westmont, and we wanted to see specifically the downtown get past its current state. You know, we were kind of frustrated, you know. Everything about this community is wonderful. We love it. You know, some of us have kids, some of us, you know, have been here all whole lives, so there's our transplants. The parks, the schools, the library, all the community events, I mean, the fireworks, you know, the taste, everything is awesome. And the only thing that seemed like was missing was a vibrant downtown. So, we started getting together and putting our heads together and, you know, coming up with ways that we could help, you know, work with the village, work with the businesses, and more importantly, work with residents to get people excited, get people positive. You know, there's so much hearsay around town. "Oh, I heard the village did this. Oh, I heard the businesses did this. I heard this." We're kind of here to help facilitate a lot of that and set things straight and encourage people to get involved, to care, and all that kind of good stuff. So, since we started, our biggest kind of asset right now has been our Facebook page, which has almost 400 members now, and the discussion on there is out of this world. I mean, from some of you trustees chiming in on community events or issues related to power outages or events, to business owners, to school districts, everything. It's a great resource for anyone in Westmont to kind of be involved. I did put some of our cards out on the table there that have our website, our phone number, our address. I encourage anyone in the community, the board, businesses, you know, just reach out to us, join our page. We're really here to help all things Westmont, and especially downtown, kind of point in the right direction here. So, Linda, do you have anything?
Well, the only thing I can say is, I think we all know that Jason's our biggest cheerleader.
Yeah, me and my guys out there. We wander the streets, so I look forward, you know, this is my home. A lot of us in the group, it's our home. We're here for good. Our roots are planted, and I look forward to seeing, you know, the community grow, as we all do. So, thank you.
And I think, right now, you're maybe going to start working a little bit with Westmont Special Events Corp. to kind of...
Yeah, I mean, we get our hands in everywhere. I mean, with some of the special events, with some of the parades in town, with some, you know, even the Barbecue Fest, which is the Lions, you know, I believe.
It's Lions.
Any event in town, we like to be part of. And going forward, you're going to see us more involved, and our name out there more, because even with the Chamber, with some of the businesses, we just really want to bring everyone together, because it doesn't matter if you're a business, or a resident, or an event, or the village, or special events, we're just one big happy family. So, you know, stay in, bug us anytime, and you'll probably see us out and about more often.
I also reached out to them to welcome them to a Westmont First organization.
Very good.
Absolutely.
I think you cannot. I think Linda said it well. I think Jason has a lot of enthusiasm, and it's all about Westmont, so I think he is a huge asset, and appreciate you coming tonight and telling everybody about your organization.
All right. We got to get back to the street fair now.
There you are. All right, thanks. Get those boys some ice cream.
We need a kitty cocktail from the night, so.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, have a good one.
I just have one other item. There'll be a downtown development grant meeting on July 2 at 6:00 downstairs. Shannon will chair that, so it'll be on Tuesday. Shannon will chair that, so it'll be on Tuesday night next week at 6:00 PM. So, that's all I have for now. Clerk Sibski.
I want to tell everybody that I saw Annie last weekend at the high school. I encourage everyone to go see it. It's a delightful production. The kids are cute. Every aspect of it is enjoyable. It will be performed Friday and Saturday again this weekend at 7:00 and 2:00 on Sunday. So, please go out and see it and support this local theater group. We need to get behind them and keep them going. Secondly, don't be watching us. Turn off your TVs and get out to the street fair. It's too nice to be sitting in here.
Unless you're watching this on replay Sunday afternoon.
Well, but they should have been on anyway.
Right.
Anyway, those are my major announcements, and then, secondly, I have placed minutes from the community meeting flood event on the 22nd, May 22nd, and Village tour minutes from yesterday. I'd like to add these to the agenda to be approved on Monday night, so, that's all I have. Thanks.
The attorney, do you have any other?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to request an executive session to discuss pending litigation involving alarm detection systems. That's all I have.
All right, we will have that. Thank you. Manager Searle.
Thank you. Several things I wanted to mention, that on Monday, we're going to recognize four of our employees, longtime employees that are going to be retiring. We have three of them from the Public Works Department, one from the Police Department. Their names, we wanted to list them on the agenda because we're not sure that all of them are going to be able to be here Monday for the recognition, but we certainly wanted to recognize it. You know, we had just a little bit over 100 years of collective Village service between these four individuals, and they've served the Village very well. I will mention their names. We have Mike Chorney from the Public Works Department, Frank Kulis from Public Works Department, Greg Compton from the Police Department, and George Mossman from the Public Works Department. So, we'll have those recognitions on Monday. I also wanted to mention on Monday, we will have an Administration-Finance Committee meeting at 6:00, and that'll be here in the executive session conference room prior to the meeting. And I wanted to also mention, of course, we have our voting meeting on July 1st, but this will be our last committee, the whole meeting, because starting on July 11th, we go to our new schedule where we will be meeting every other Thursday, and I just wanted to point that out for public information, that we will be starting that new schedule after these sets of meetings. And finally, I wanted to mention that we got a phone call today from a resident who was concerned, a person came to their door and was soliciting on behalf of a company called IGS Energy, and this person was telling the resident that the Village had enacted an aggregate natural gas program similar to the aggregate electricity program, and that they were the endorsed vendor for that program. I wanted to caution people that there is no aggregate natural gas program. The aggregate electricity program was something that was set up specifically by state law. It required a referendum vote before that even was approved for the Village. Found out later, when we got back in touch with this resident, they did call somebody at the company, and they were apologetic on behalf of this salesperson, but if you have somebody come to your door, of course, you should always ask and make sure that they have a solicitor's license. That's one thing that's required, but there is no aggregate natural gas program. You have been, for a number of years, able to go out and buy your natural gas from different vendors. That has been legal, but don't be misled if somebody's trying to sell you something, you know, based on that premise, because that's not true. And I would urge if, and I think the chief would agree, if that continues to happen, people have that experience, maybe to call the Police Department, and we can have a discussion with these folks, so, that is all I have.
All right. As I mentioned under... We'll go to trustees. Trustee Scott, we'll start with you tonight.
Thank you. Just want to announce that we're going to have an Economic Development Committee meeting next Wednesday, July 3rd at 9:00 AM, in the executive room behind me.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Trustee Addington.
A couple of things. I also want to congratulate the folks from Annie. Took my granddaughter on Sunday, and I concur with Ginny. I think you'll all find it to be extremely fun. It's all West, it's all residence, like community theater, and they did a fantastic job. Matter of fact, they may have a new volunteer, because my eight-year-old granddaughter Samantha was really turned on by it, and she says, "How do I get involved?" I says, "I'll introduce you to the people," so, we'll see. The other thing that I have is, I, the board knows, or some of the board knows, I will not be here next week. I will be out of the country. The International Association of Lions Clubs has their international convention, of which I am a delegate, so unfortunately, I'm going to miss all these wonderful meetings next week, so I feel bad about that, but those things happen. So, if anybody, for some reason, needs to get ahold of me, they're going to have to wait till the week after, and that brings up my last topic, since I won't be here. Just so everyone is aware, I had talked with our manager, because I know on Monday, at the Finance and Administration Meeting, you're talking about waste, and I've asked Ron again to please see what he can find out from other communities or from some of the businesses. I think everybody remembers when we were talking about the eatery tax. There were several comments that were made about the fact that what they're paying for garbage pickup in our own commercial businesses was, in one case, I think they said three times higher than what they were quoted. I'm not sure that that's necessarily a true statement, but I think that when those statements are made, we ought to at least try to see if we can come up with the facts. So, I've asked Ron to see what he can find out between a couple of days ago and Monday, so that we have that information available, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Enjoy Germany. Is that where you're going?
I'm going to, yeah.
All right, Germany, all right.
Amber, Germany, which ought to be interesting.
All right. Trustee Barry.
I just wanted to remind the people that were affected by the flood that SBA loan applications are deadlining closest is July 9th. Now, again, that's the SBA, which is through the FEMA. It confuses some people because the residents are available to get loans through the SBA. So, any of you that are sitting on those, I would recommend to get them in shortly, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate the chief and all of his staff and Dawn on a great cruising night. It was just phenomenal, the squad car, it was just amazing, as always, very good. And to convey sympathy to the Dom family. Rich Doms passed away very suddenly this week, and he's a longtime Westmont resident. Very nice, nice family, so sympathy to them. Then the last thing I had, and Steve, forgive me if maybe you were thinking of bringing this up, because I do this to you every week. I didn't know if Steve May wanted to talk about the special brush pickup because of the storm.
That was under, is he here? Yes.
Did I step out of turn? Sorry. Am I in trouble?
I didn't say, because it was his topic.
Okay, sorry. Were you going to say that?
Well, thank you. I mean, essentially, you've already, you've identified it. As a result of the, you know, windstorms we had earlier in the week, the, actually, it was the wind gust on Monday evening, produced a lot of brush throughout town, you know, not just on private property, but many of our Parkway trees as well, which is very evident because there's still a lot of communities, you know, nearby that are still without power as a result of that, of that storm. But with that here locally, we were, we've actually been doing brush pickup since. We're going around and collecting and doing the maintenance on the trees that we maintain, and asking people to put their brush out immediately, because we'll collect it as we go, but there will be one final sweep. You know, we're giving everybody through the weekend to get their brush out by Sunday night, because Monday, we'll go through the town once and do one last check on that. But other than that, the size and the type and all the other restrictions that go with our regular brush pickup program apply to the materials that we'll collect.
Do we know if all the power's back on?
I don't know.
I believe, well, the last message I got from ComEd yesterday was that they would have it all restored by last evening. Honestly, I have not looked today on their map to see if that is in fact the case, but we did not, we did not get any further phone calls from ComEd. They have a notification system that comes out, so if there are people that are without power, I would highly recommend they try to contact ComEd or contact us and let us know, because at this point, we believe it's all been restored.
Do we get any kind of report on the kind of damage that they have?
They give us an annual report on, that summarizes all the outages and what the clauses are, and that's done usually at the beginning of the calendar year.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Anything else, Trustee Seneca?
No, that's it, thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Nero.
Sure, I only have one thing now.
Stop it!
I just want to give everybody an update on our first meeting for the Stormwater Committee that was just put together. I want to say that it was comprised of over 20 members. It was a very productive meeting, I thought. It was a very good collection of residents all over the Village, everybody experiencing a different type of stormwater issue. I do want to say that we went over a ton of stuff, and it's a lot of information, so working with Larry McIntyre, we decided that I think the best course going forward, the next meeting, we're going to break the group up into a few smaller groups and have them focus tentatively on three groups, and it could change a little bit, but the first group will focus on reviewing the stormwater study recommendations and prioritizing projects throughout the Village. The second small group will potentially focus on putting together associated costs with these projects, and the last group will identify potential revenue sources and funding options that are available. We have also planned to meet the end, the last Monday of each month, so the next meeting will be July 29th at 7:00 PM. I encourage everybody to come. It's an open meeting, and, you know, we're really going to tackle some problems and get some things done, so I'm looking forward to it. I don't know if Larry has anything else to add, but I, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I quickly announced that Spencer Parker did sneak in after roll call, and he's been here for most of the meeting. I think he missed the first three minutes, maybe, so.
The minutes will reflect that he has arrived. All right. The agenda item number six, the items to be removed from the consent agenda. Do any board members want any item removed from the consent agenda? Nope. Manager Searle, could you please read the consent agenda?
I'd be happy to. In addition to the minutes that the clerk mentioned a couple of minutes ago that she asked to add to the agenda, we have the minutes from the June 13th meeting and the June 17th meeting. We also have a finance ordinance, number five. The total amount of that is $940,744.64. And then, we have several purchase orders, one to the Village of Donner's Grove for $485,826. That is our percentage for the operation of the dispatch center relationship that we have with the Village. Then we have one for Mead Electric in the amount of $60,000. This is for street light locates and repairs for fiscal year 2014. And then, we have a purchase order to Sentinel Technologies in the amount of $19,243, and this involves a maintenance agreement on our network equipment. So, the total amount of the purchase orders is $565,069. The other thing I wanted to mention that is on the consent agenda, and this is something that we, as the board knows, the consent agenda is a relatively new process for us, and in consultation with the mayor, we decided to put the prevailing wage ordinance. It's something that we're annually required to pass and file with the state, so I just want to call special attention to that in case any of the board members wanted to pull that out separately. We are legally required to pass this, and you'll find in your packet the ordinance, and you also have to list the prevailing wages, and that's used for public contracts, so, that is what we have under consent agenda.
Any comments? If not, we'll move on to the unfinished business. A, Central Business District TIF, adoption of ordinances. Manager Searle, would you please read?
Okay, the board considered following ordinances adopting the Central Business District, Tax Increment Financing District, an ordinance designating the redevelopment project area, an ordinance adopting the TIF in connection with the designation of the Central Business Redevelopment Project Area, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan and project. And I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Shannon Maloch. She's got some additional comments on the act.
I do, and I'm also going to put the map image on the screen for everyone.
Before, Shannon?
Yes.
Let's point out that we no longer use the word acting.
That's right, thank you.
You know, I was sitting here thinking, when she called Roy, I couldn't remember if you said acting or not.
Oh, she didn't.
No, I did not.
Yeah, we did, it was announced last week that she is now our full-fledged Community Development Director, so that announcement went out.
Thank you. Thank you very much to everyone, I appreciate that. I did prepare a few remarks that I wanted to give before we open it up to any questions that there may be. This has been a very long and arduous process, and I'd just like to give a little bit of history here. In 2012, the Village contracted with Tuska Associates to initiate the process of studying whether downtown Westmont, which is the area generally located along Cass Avenue between Naperville Road on the north and Dallas Street on the south, would qualify as a Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, district. TIF remains one of the few economic development tools that a municipality can use to incentivize reinvestment in areas that aren't thriving on their own. This work came on the heels of the Village's two-year-long commitment to update its 15-year-old comprehensive plan and the creation of the Village's first TIF district at 63rd and Cass earlier this year. Our community is in the midst of great things and is seeing the signs of an improving economy. We're fortunate to have used the economic downturn to regroup on long-range goals due to our elected officials' commitment to planning for a successful and vibrant future. Of course, none of this is simple or speedy, but the adoption of the new plans and economic incentives will provide us with a framework, the building blocks on which to move forward. Through all of these planning processes, we've heard feedback from a wide variety of stakeholders. An exceptionally well-attended community meeting was held February 25th of this year. The meeting was presented to a full house and resulted in a great dialogue between residents and business owners on what the future of downtown Westmont ought to look like. The meeting concluded with a round of applause, a first at a TIF meeting to the best of our knowledge. Later, the Joint Review Board provided a favorable recommendation on the proposed TIF on April 26th, and the Village Board conducted its public hearing on May 2nd. The spirit of cooperation between School District 201 and the Village was evident throughout the entire process. The spirit of cooperation from our postage machine and the staff amongst all of our departments should also be noted. They were of great help in getting all those statutory mailings out. I respectfully request the Village Board's support for the Central Business District Tax Increment Financing District, and approval of the related ordinances at Monday evening's meeting. It's truly been a pleasure working on these projects, and it's my sincerest hope that the best is yet to come for Westmont.
Yep.
Thanks, John.
Any comments, question? Trustee Addington.
Yeah, we're at this point, is there anything else, for instance, with, you mentioned School District 201 or any of the other partners in this? They're all done. They've all voted, moved on, so this is like the last step now?
Well, the last step, as far as the statutory approval process, yes. What you still can do is refine the plan for the development of downtown and what you'd like to see there, whether it's a certain mix of uses at specific locations that you prefer, but more specifically, things like public improvements and sort of evaluating those and how you're going to finance those.
Okay.
And the same is true with the Southwestmont Business District.
So, they're in place, it's just massaging and fine-tuning?
Yeah.
Is the, is the, the location, is the map now, is that it? That can't be changed at this point?
Not without going through the whole process all over again.
Okay, so that's, so in both cases, that's it?
Yes.
That's the map? Okay, great, thank you. I think Shannon did a happy job.
Any other questions or comment? If not, it'll be on the agenda for Monday night. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business B, the 2012 Unfinished business B, the 2013 Westmont Street Fair, street closures. And if I can again ask Larry McIntyre, our Special Events and Public Relations Coordinator, to give us an update?
Sure. The first three weeks of the Westmont Street Fair have been tremendous. I would say, I've been involved with the event very closely since 2004 and then prior to that, when it was started in the mid-1990s. And these first three weeks have been the strongest first three weeks we've ever had of this particular event. And I think it's all about the layout, the fact that we are closing Cass Avenue from Burlington to Irving, and in parking the cars diagonally, it just creates a very festival atmosphere. There's a midway that goes between the cars on the north side of the layout, and then as you go down towards Burlington, that's where we've had the fresh market aspect, and that's been growing as well. We've heard overwhelming positive response on this. And so, with each week, our attendance growing and the amount of cars coming growing, we basically feel that we need to be prepared for growth. And our thought is possibly that's going to be continuing on Cass Avenue North from Irving to Norfolk. And so, the plan would be to close that area starting at 5:00 as needed. We'd put up signage in advance so people would be aware that classic car parking could begin at 5:00 PM. But then you'd close off the street and classic cars would continue to park and hopefully move all the way up to Norfolk and pack the place. Eventually, that may result in additional changes. There's thoughts that if the fresh market continues to grow, maybe that might move up towards Irving Street. Lot of things in the works there, but basically, we're here tonight to talk about closure of Cass from Irving to Norfolk from 5:00 to 9:00.
Again, I think when we discussed this, I discussed this with you. I asked that you would go up and down and visit the businesses, and we've heard a little comment about it earlier this evening. Anything else you've heard from any of those businesses?
Absolutely. We've talked, let's see, Tuesday, our volunteers went through that block and hand-delivered notices and talked to every business owner that was present. And a lot of folks were sort of just interested in, you know, learning about it for the first time and really didn't have strong feelings one way or the other. Westmont Floral, however, was one business that had overwhelming enthusiastic support for it, and she normally closes at 4:00 PM, but she said if that success continues, she'll stay open longer. Westmont Restaurant, once again, just sort of was interested in learning the details but didn't offer a lot of commentary. Same with the Glass Company. L&amp;J Auto has always been a supporter of our event, and they potentially do have clients up until 7:00 PM, but they do have alley egress, and so that will assist them. Another business that could potentially be more impacted than others would be the Toon Funeral Home, but we have a very good relationship with Nancy, and we work with her directly on any of her concerns. And if they had a visitation or any sort of service on a Thursday, then we would make sure that the use of that lot right next to them would remain open, and advanced notice would be given to people attending those particular services, that there would be additional parking at Bank of America. Now, we do have permission from Bank of America to utilize their parking lot for Cruisin' Nights. However, if the layout is down Cass, we're kind of thinking we won't need Bank of America. In fact, that might be more of a residential and business parking. However, if we grow that much more, then that's hopefully a good problem to have and figure that one out as well.
Again, as relation to Dr. Lockhart and Dr. Mays, I know we all received that email. You did personally see him today?
Yes.
And you feel like he's satisfied with setting aside two additional parking spots?
I think so. I had a very good conversation, and he was glad to have the personal interaction. I think ultimately, he learned about it yesterday, I suppose, through an email. And so, just felt that that was sort of short notice to kind of get to tonight's meeting and relay his comments. And so, he spoke with Dr. Lockhart, and Dr. Lockhart had come. But I felt I had a very good conversation with him and with the notion that potentially, the maximum amount of customers he's going to have is four between 5:00 and 9:00, and if he almost can have valet service right to his front door, we're hoping that that is actually a better situation than he has now, because right now Cruisin' Nights actually has permission to use the parallel parking all the way to Norfolk from 6:00 to 9:00, from 5:00 to 9:00. And so, so this will actually allow more parking.
Before the, any questions? I don't know, Laurie Forsberg is with the Executive Director of the Chamber. I don't know if you have anything to add, because I know you were involved a little bit in the process.
Well, I know that we did send out an initial email, seeing if there was any additional feedback. We've received no other comments than the other comments we received from Dr. Lockhart and Dr. Mays. And so, everything we've heard has been very positive. And discussions at our board meeting on Wednesday, there was strong support for continuing to expand this event because it's bringing a lot of traffic downtown, so.
Thank you. While you're both up there, is there any questions and comments from...
Yeah, I do, because I've heard other, I've been called all day today, and most of it's been extremely negative. And most of the negativity, again, is not that they don't want to support it, although I did have one business who said if they want to come down and look at their books, they'll show us. They're losing, the last three Thursdays, they've lost between $8,000 and $9,000 in sales, each one of the Thursdays, because of the street being closed. But again, what, what the overall comments of the calls that I got is not that they don't think it's a good thing. It's not that they don't think that it's something that can be worked. They're mad because they get told at the last minute. I've sat here now for three meetings, and in two of those three meetings, I've had to talk about the fact that our business community was given late notice, first time on Eatery Tax and now on this one. You know, don't we like our business community? I don't know. I mean, there's no reason for it. That's what people are upset about. And we need to get better on, on how we work with our business community. I, I just, I'm very unhappy to be part of this when, when people come to me and say, "Why wasn't I told?" Or, "Why was I told at the last minute?" And, you know, that's just wrong.
I wish, if you get some of those, can you forward those to me? Because I got, the only one I received was from Dave and Dr. Mays.
And I got that one too.
And I have asked Larry, both Larrys, and they personally have pretty much talked...
I'd just like to get a point of clarification from Trustee Addington. Was that a business in the first block north of Burlington or in the second block?
Third.
The third block?
So, they, and because of the street closure, people aren't crossing the tracks to come to their business. Whether it's one block or two blocks is inconsequential.
Understand.
And, and again, we can live with those things because it's a good program. All I'm complaining about is the lack of, is the lack of good notice to these people. You know, to read an email, and I have Dr. Mays is right here, to read an email that he's told the day before, we should be better than that as a board. We should give our businesses and our people better notices of what's going on. That's what I'm saying. I just think it's wrong.
Jim, can you tell us, are they a Chamber member?
I have, I don't, you know, I don't know if Dr. Mays is or not.
No, the other one that was affected?
I believe so.
Okay.
Dr. Mays is a Chamber member?
Yeah.
But again, from...
That's, you know, I like the idea. I've got some reservations. You know, the other question that I had, and this is more of a rhetorical question, I thought at one time, and I can be very much corrected on this one, I thought at one time that there was, we had passed an ordinance many years ago after the first taste that we were only going to allow Cass Avenue to be closed once a year. And I, and I don't know if any of the old timers remember that or not.
I don't.
Because I know that that did come up as a discussion.
Yeah.
Because again, even at that time, after the, after the, after the 75th anniversary, there were some businesses that were unhappy, and, and I thought we had said that we'd only allow it once a year. But I could be completely wrong on that, and again, I'm going back to something from 16 years ago, so.
Well, we can look that up by Monday.
But again, I'm not arguing against that it's a bad thing. I'm just arguing about the notification. You know, I just hate to hear, you know, "You're part of the board, and why don't you tell me what's going on ahead of time?" That's, that's the real theme, and that's upsetting.
Just to touch on the restaurant tax, that was notified more than anything that I think this board has been through since I've been on. We've been talking about that since the budget cycle.
Yeah.
But multiple budget meetings, I...
And it's been published. I mean, I...
Say that, that, we didn't do a good job with that. I would have to disagree with.
And I sympathize. I do. I sympathize with the businesses, but there comes a point in time when people have to take responsibility to find out what's happening in this town. Everything is on the website. We're all very approachable. We talked about that in March and April, so that should not have been a surprise to anybody. And if it was, I apologize for that, but the information was there.
And I don't know what else we could have done, Jim. I mean, I, we did everything we possibly could to get that out there. I mean, if not a dozen times, it was publicly talked about, let alone what these two gentlemen could have done too.
Of all the issues in six years that I've been sitting on this board, I got more phone calls, emails, and visits for concealed carry than I got on everything...
I got a lot of those too.
On everything else put together.
Absolutely.
People have to take responsibility to know what's going on.
Everything we've done in six years, concealed carry got more than anything else. And I'd say a third of those people didn't even live in town.
Yeah, many of them didn't.
So, it, you know, Trustee Seneca has something to, you know, that's true, that what she said. There is, if you own a business in this town, or you own property in this town, you have a responsibility to know what's going on in this town too.
Man, if my livelihood's in this town, you want to bet I'm going to do my homework and know what's going on.
And all of us are approachable.
Yep.
Can we get a, can we get a list of all the points of contact that you use, you know, the website and all of that, just so that we know how many pieces of mail go out from the Chamber? Because I know you both worked on it. Let's just clarify everything that you've done to get the word out, as well as it's being talked about here and everywhere else.
On this particular item, and it did move quickly, and so that's, I'm not going to say that that's not the case. It's just that, once an idea is initiated, there's going to be a first time that someone hears it, and that's really what happened. So, Friday was the first time that this concept was, Thursday night probably, was, it was talked about at the event. And then Friday morning, we worked to put it on the agenda, so then immediately, it's posted on the agenda for the public. Monday, WSCC worked to create a document that was going to be very thorough in explaining it. Tuesday, two of our volunteers went to every single business and hand-delivered and talked to every business in the 200 block of North Cass. Wednesday, we did yet a third, you know, aspect of communication, and that was the email. And so, and that was where some people were learning about it for the first time, but that was, you know, it was subsequent to us actually making a personal visit. And in fact, in one case, the business owner was disappointed that they did not know until the email, when actually, we had talked to the business the day before, so...
Part of the problem is that, because if you don't get it to us now, then it has to wait till the next meeting.
Right. The timing of it is...
And how many cars did we turn away at the car show?
It's hard to say. It wasn't in, it was more like seeing the drive-bys. You know, as people were driving up and saw that they were full, you know, they'd take a look and they'd say, "Ah." And so, so there's a momentum aspect to this where word of mouth is what's going to grow this event amongst the car owners, trying to get more, you know, car folk down, and then that draws more of the public down to look at the cars. So, if people are having a good experience, which they have been, they're going to spread it to the other communities and other car shows, and that will grow the event. If they come down and felt they got turned away a few times, and that becomes the word of mouth, then we're, you know, working with that challenge, so.
Trustee Barry?
Just logistically, it, when you close Irving now, is, are you closing that to alley to alley? Are cars parking on, on north, or east and west of Irving, like to the China Chef alley into what I call Auto Parts, the old alley there? Is that open for, for cars now, or is that still just wide open east and west?
The, well, the alleys are completely open, but you're talking about Irving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. West Irving, we've closed two out of the three weeks, but we left it open when Toon had a visitation. So, we closed West Irving, but we, I'm sorry, we closed East Irving, but left West Irving open. So, there was egress to head over to Lincoln and...
From the alley, or from...
From the alley and from Cass. So, that's what's been happening the last three weeks.
So, from alley to alley, it's closed already, so cars are, cars still have to get through there at Irving?
I see what you're saying. East Irving from the alley to Cass has been closed for classic cars.
So, one, one thought I had when I saw Dr. Mays's email and so forth was, is there a possibility of, of possibly just closing the road like at the cash station? So, then the cash station would still be open, and then utilizing as far as both sides of Irving, east and west, would that compensate enough cars if we went just to the Bank of America cash station as far as closing it down, and then we would still have that open in front of Westmont Restaurant and Dr. Mays?
So, you mean leave Irving open?
Well, no, Irving would be completely closed at the alleys or at Lincoln and Linden. You could close it that way.
Okay.
But instead of closing at Norfolk?
Okay.
Why not close it 100 feet in at the cla, at the cash station to leave that open, and then you would still leave Westmont Restaurant and Dr. Lockhart's parking open?
So, you're speaking for Bank of America's drive-through cash station?
Well, I, again, just from reading the email, and my thought earlier was today may be a good compromise, and still then, we would be getting a lot more cars in, and really, those businesses, like you said, you know, we have an apartment building, Westmont Floral, and then I believe the other side is a church and insurance, so we're not having as great of impact if, if that's workable. It was just a thought that I...
That would be something that I would probably ask police and public works to comment on, but it might be asking the public to use a private egress to get out of, you know, that might be a challenge. And the other thing to mention about all this, and with all the events that we have with closing downtown, so that's the Taste of Westmont, and of course, this Westmont Street Fair Cruisin' Nights, there's always been a decent amount of emotion regarding this conversation, and, but we need to also speak to the amount of folks that really want this. And I think Larry can speak to this the best, but for the, for the street fair event, the DWBA, we start, actually, I'll start with ourselves. Westmont Special Events started having meetings September, October, November, and we had specific meetings to talk about what should we do with Cruisin' Nights. And it was out of those meetings that the idea of the street closure occurred. And then DWBA brought it to their meetings, and it was on their agenda every single month. Anyone who attended those meetings, for the most part, it's my understanding that it was almost unanimous support. They really wanted to give it a shot.
That's been my feeling since 1990, what? Whenever they started, that's been my feeling, that it should have been. So, so I agree with that. Again, we're just trying to look to accommodate more cars and then also keep, keep everyone happy, or at least some people happy. But, and, and I also think with closing of Irving, where today, that you still have traffic going through there, that gains a lot of cars on that, basically that T there.
Sure.
And then, again, you're gaining, you're gaining a lot of, especially parallel in there. So, maybe something that you guys would, would look at. Again, Chief, if there's logistics to that or not, I don't know.
Director may defer to me, so.
Yeah, we just had a request also of moving the barricades at Burlington and Cass 25 feet to allow for parking, thing like that. Our recommendation is you close it off at the intersection. It's going to cause too much confusion for people coming through. After they pass Norfolk going south for that 50, 75 feet, they're going to realize, "Oh, wait a second, I can't go through," now where they're going to go. Our recommendation is we do the hard close at the intersection, so it looks a lot easier for traffic control. I understand that, yes, we would, it would help, but I think would cause more confusion for the travelers.
I do have to somewhat agree just with Trustee Addington as far as this particular item, because it has been, just since last Friday.
Sure.
So, if there's one item that we probably, if we need to, we can postpone it.
Absolutely.
Because maybe not enough notification. But I do know on the other two items, especially with the initial closure of the street, you guys, I know the Special Events Corporation with the Downtown Business Group was talking about that since January, February, and I know Larry Forsberg, he said yes, and I attended several meetings since then. So, that, that awareness is there. Unfortunately, you can't get everybody to read emails or come to your meetings.
Sure.
So, that part I think we did. And I think the, as far as Eatery Tax, and I agreed when we postponed it, because I thought it was fair that we, and I think both, Larry Forsberg through the Chamber and yourself, made every attempt to notify all 93 of those businesses, and I think we did do a good job. And we ended up hearing from five, so... So I think we do want to make sure that we continue to be transparent. I agree with trustee Addington. We don't want to do something without giving people the opportunity. But I was comfortable when, when both you and Larry said that everybody on that street other than Dr. Lockhart, and I don't know about anybody further down, because trustee Addington was talking about the third block, because that's still open. I don't know how that affects their business as far as Cass not being open. But the second block, really, you only had the two or three that are open, and you, the only one I've heard from and you have is Dr. Lockhart. And if we have that valet parking, I think we would satisfy his concerns.
Yep. Yep. I mean, that, that was the sense of my conversation, and, and like I said, that's actually a better situation than currently, where it's actually reserved for classic cars right there. So it would be a change. But if this was postponed to, you know, two weeks later, obviously, we'll, we'll miss a couple of weeks of opportunity, but, but if that's what's necessary to communicate it, it's, you know, board decision.
July the 11th, for the next two weeks, you're not going to have street fair.
True.
So maybe that first week back might be light.
That's true.
You're hoping it is, but it might be. So if we, if, if the board's pleasure is to either put it on the agenda, or we can put it on to postpone, that's, I'm looking for additional comments and feedback. Or we can leave it on and-
Well, we haven't heard really from, from anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, and we've made, you know, we've reached out twice. It's been a really short window. It has. But we have reached out twice, once with a flyer and once through an email, and we heard from Dr. Lockhart, and really, that was it, right?
Right.
So I, I have no problem voting on this on Monday.
How many people? Well, just going, we went into China Chef, and, and those folks are always accommodating, and, you know, so they didn't express any concern. L&amp;J Auto, they often do, you know, express, they'll, they'll say that, well, you know, we're open for business and we have people, but they, they always say we can work around it, and their car guy is, is the bottom line, so they enjoy the event. We really didn't talk to any residents. You know, you have the multi-units there, but we dropped off the notification, but we didn't talk to anyone directly, but we didn't hear from anyone either. Westmont Floral, Teresa could not be more supportive. Pollock Glass, you know, they, they see us like three times a year when we come in and drop off the notification, and truthfully, they're usually just happy to know what bands are playing at the Taste, but they didn't express any, you know, negativity. Just, just interest, really. Westmont Restaurant didn't express truly any negativity, was just interested in finding out what it was. In fact, with Westmont Restaurant, they had sort of liked the idea of possibly being able to move out onto the street and do something. They were encouraged by that idea. Cuts are us, cuts on Cass, same thing, the hair shop, you know, interested in knowing what the schedule was, but didn't report anything specific. And actually, the eye doctor, when we went in, it was pretty much seemed to be positive feedback at that moment as well. The note was a day later and had a different tenor. But then, the bank always works with us. You know, they close, I believe, at 5 o'clock, and, and so they've been supportive, and we have an agreement with them to use their parking lot. And as long as we leave the, some egress for their ATM, you know, they're good partners with us. The church, I don't think we spoke to anyone there. We dropped the notice off, but I don't think we heard from them. But we've, in the past, never had any difficulties. Working with Toon and Nancy, there has been some challenges there, but they were real challenges that were able to be addressed and overcome. And so, so I think she's very satisfied with our relationship. She knows she can call me at any time and get me, and we'll, we'll figure out a resolution. So.
Any other trustee comments? Anybody from the audience would have a comment on this item? If not, I'll, it'll be on the agenda for Monday evening. Thank you. Going on to new business, 132 South Linden Avenue. Burbom, they say that white, variance approval request. Manager Searle, would you please read?
Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from John Burbom for a front yard deck in an R3 single-family detached residential district. Zoning code variance to allow lot coverage greater than 35% maximum allowed for the purpose of approving a front yard deck on a lot with existing non-conforming lot width. A zoning code variance to allow the construction of a front yard deck within the required front and side yard setbacks. And the third aspect is a zoning code variance to allow the construction of a front yard deck larger than 100 square feet. And do we have the petitioner here? He could approach and present, and I guess, representing staff, we have Joe Ziegler.
Joe Ziegler is our staff person?
Yes. Thank you. So as the manager read, I'm asking for some variances to build a deck in the front yard of my home. I have a couple of pictures here. If you haven't seen my property, it's a little zoomed in. But I live on South Linden Avenue, a couple houses south of the Catholic Church and directly across from Veterans Memorial Park. This is the front yard of my house where I'm proposing to build the deck. It's very deep, the lot is narrow, and the house is set back quite far from the house. You can see some large trees in the front of the property, which would remain, and some small trees up by the house, which would be removed. If you, this is what the proposed deck would look like, a couple architectural drawings. As you can see, it is fairly large. You can disregard the stone pit, which is on the drawing. That obviously isn't in the final plans. But this, obviously, the variances I'm requesting are for a couple of reasons. One, currently, the lot is covered at 38%. The primary reason for that is the lot is very narrow, and so you can see there's a driveway that runs along the entire, almost the entire length of the depth of the lot to a detached garage in the back. This by itself represents about 15% of the coverage of the lot, and, and so it, it creates a lot of coverage. What I'm proposing to do in terms of lot coverage, because I understand, I purchased the house three years ago, it's already at 38%. It's zoned at 35, obviously. The proposed deck would actually raise the coverage, count it at 50% to about 45%, which obviously is high. And so you can kind of see here, there's a sidewalk that runs from the side door around the back of the house, that's about 350 square feet. I'm proposing to remove almost half of that sidewalk completely and redo the rest of it in semi-permeable pavers, which will actually, I think in the report, it says the lot coverage is about 40%, which I think is the calculation if the entire thing is covered in permeable paver. So it will actually be a little less than that. So the percent lot coverage will be just very incrementally increased. Obviously, it's also a variance to build the deck in the front yard. This is the backyard of my house. There's a very large pear tree right behind the house that I would rather not cut down. And you'll also see there's no ground floor exterior entrance in the back of my house. There's only steps down to the basement, so there would be no way to connect an exterior deck into the house without just simply walking out the side and around. So obviously, the deck, you know, we've been working with the village planner, her staff's been very helpful. You know, it would be, you know, would allow any rainfall to pass through it and the ground beneath it, you know, would have gravel and be able to, to absorb the, any rainfall that falls onto it.
You know, staff, if you would like to, Jill, if you have a comment?
Sure. The plan commission gave a unanimous favorable recommendation. Several of the commissioners had some reservations when they saw the size of the deck. As you can see here, these are the proposed plans. The petitioner's house is set back, when they went out there, they saw how far it's set back. It's set back at about 45 feet, and the allowed setback is 10 feet, which, or 35 feet, so about half the deck is actually, would be permitted in that, in that front yard setback. So about half the deck is what the variation is for, is to encroach into that. And the plan commission also noted, as the petitioner mentioned, the lack of access in the rear and the mature vegetation that he's trying to save.
I have a question for the petitioner. Would you be using this as a deck as if it were in your backyard? In other words, you know, an umbrella, a barbecue grill, lawn furniture? Or would this be more like a front porch?
The use would be more like a deck in a backyard. So I don't know that I would have the grill on the deck, but a table, an eating area, a place to be, you know, outside with family and friends for an extended period of time. And my neighborhood, obviously, is a very social neighborhood. The, the baseball field is right across the street, which was one of the reasons we bought the house. We really enjoy that. And so our front yard is a, is an open, enjoyable space that we think would, would be well-suited for that.
Were there any comments from the neighbors?
That's what I was going to ask. Anybody in the audience who, anybody have a comment? There was a, there was a letter in the packet, wasn't there?
Yeah.
From one of the neighbors.
There was a letter from one of the neighbors in support that we entered as part of the plan commission record.
What, what neighbor was that? South or-
The neighbor immediately to the south.
To the south.
So right next door to you?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I think you testified there were some hedgerows on either side.
There are. There are hedgerows on either side. The neighbors to our house, to our, to our south purchased their house about two years ago, and are, you know, obviously, we're well acquainted with them. The neighbors to the north are, are actually tenants in that house, and we've talked to them briefly about it, and they haven't expressed any concern. But all the houses are set back fairly far. And actually, the houses to either side of us have larger footprints than ours. They're bigger houses. So it's our contention that even with some of the increase, that the overall character of the neighborhood and the, the look of the house from the street, especially because the front yard slopes so dramatically, that it, it doesn't, doesn't make a sort of change of character in the neighborhood.
With the setback in the plans, I mean, it, it fits the neighborhood. It looks really nice. I went over there and walked it, and I think it's a great plan, and hopefully, it moves forward.
Thank you.
Box seats to the ballgame, right there.
Yeah.
Sit on that deck. Elevated, and you look out on the Babe Ruth League Field.
Yeah. It did have fireworks there once.
No, they did it. We almost burned down the museum.
I know.
We did fireworks there one time and almost burned down the museum. We don't do that again.
It was not a good plan.
Any other comments? If not, it'll be on the agenda for Monday evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business B, North Cass Downtown Development Grant Request. Manager Searle?
Excuse me. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development grant request from Danielle Kirin of the Sweet and Savory Spot in the amount of $1,250. And our community development director is going to comment on this?
Yes, I apologize. Danielle had confirmed her attendance this evening. I'm not sure if she got tied up down at the street fair. They've been trying to promote their new business, and they're getting very close to opening. So it's a little unusual. I, I could proceed and present on their behalf, or we could hold over, whatever the board's pleasure would be.
I'm-
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go for it.
You can represent.
Okay. Oh. Okay, Planner Ziegler just informs me that she heard that they had a fire alarm issue. So that would explain the holdup. So I'll, I'll present briefly on their behalf. Sweet and Savory Spot is opening soon at 31 North Cass. They've been before you on a number of occasions with regard to their development permit and their liquor license for their new dessert and bistro concept there. The facade grant committee met last week, June 18th, and looked at a number of items that they're proposing for improvements to the property. The item that's before you this evening is strictly related to facade improvements. The, this is not a permit drawing, it's just a sketch drawing that will receive additional information at permit submittal, but they're proposing a new awning along the storefront. It's about 25 feet long and five feet high. It would be brown in color and have feature pink or magenta lettering with their logoing, the address, and then some of their lines of items that they offer at the bottom. The committee did discuss, the total proposal was $2,500. The committee felt unanimously that this would be an eligible expense with a 50% share, so they recommended a grant of, where did my numbers go?
I saw it on here.
Sorry, guys. Yeah, there it is. Now, there were some fire safety improvements that were also proposed. The committee did ask that they come back to the next scheduled meeting with an itemized list, just to clarify some of the improvements that are being proposed.
Shannon, could you do me a favor and maybe, real quick, I know you're in the middle of this one, but explain to us the whole concept of this grant program and-
Certainly. The grant program has expanded over the years. It was initiated with a facade grant program. It's intended to help allure folks to make investments in their property to improve their street frontage. And it's a 50% grant that's shared by the village with an applicant. So you can ask for up to $5,000 worth of matching improvements. The facade work is for things like awning, signage, windows, door treatments, lighting, anything that will be in character with the era of the building, and also contribute to the downtown streetscape. About two or three years ago, the program was expanded. It's now known as the Downtown Development Grant because there's a secondary matching component where property owners can apply for up to $3,000 in matched assistance for life safety improvement. So that's things like electric, plumbing, and life safety within the inside of the building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we can go back to the grant. You're discussing any comments or questions from the board? Anybody in the audience? If not, we will move on to the next one, and that is agenda. It's item C, 33 North Cass Avenue, the Downtown Development Grant Request.
Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development grant request from John Hagedorn of Uncle John's Music in the amount of $2,820. And we have the petitioner here.
Hello. I'm requesting a, the, for the downtown development grant for 50% of the fire alarm system, which the total was 5,640, so half of that. And Alliance Systems Group, which is a, a vendor that's approved by the, by Westmont, would be installing it. So instead of doing it in increments or phases that they've offered, I prefer if they approve that, just to do it all at once and have it done.
And again, the facade grant committee did meet and discuss this item also on June 18th, and believed that the request as proposed would be eligible for a 50% matching grant for the interior life safety improvement. The total, again, requested was $5,640, and the committee recommended an award of $2,820.
Sounds good.
Questions?
Just a comment. Mayor, we'll probably have a lot of these coming before us during this year, and I'm just wondering, since we have a committee that looks at it, it's really rather routine. I mean, we're not going to say no, that maybe we want to consider just having staff approve them or put them in the consent agenda for, for this particular one related to the fire alarm system.
My question to Shannon, and maybe even to Manager Searle, is do we have a, a certain dollar amount that's been appropriated in the budget? Is that open-ended as far as how much is available?
There is a limited amount. Do you remember the number offhand?
30,000, I think.
Now, we'll get Spencer finally up to-
You have a total of 15,000 for the facade, and then another separate 15,000 for the life safety.
And again, the way we approach it is first come, first served, and when it's gone. So do you have any idea where we're at if we approve?
We're not really, we haven't really scratched the surface on the life safety. However, we have this application, another pending that, actually, the next item on the agenda that we're going to ask for tabling to the subsequent meeting. And then I actually have three other applications that are pending that we're scheduling for another committee meeting next week. So we have had quite a few of them as the deadline has, has gotten closer.
So again, five or six of these, that this amount would, would deplete the amount for the year, then?
And again, Shannon, that they're only available for downtown businesses.
That's correct.
There's no life safety grant outside of that.
It's only in the B1 designated properties.
I think this, this whole program started under the state Main Street program.
It did.
Not the life safety part.
No, the facade.
The life safety, no, but the facade grants.
Yeah.
It did.
And then you guys expanded it because of the other things, and it's a wonderful thing, but the money just comes out of general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, life safety probably can't count on hotel and motel tax, but we use hotel and motel tax for the facade? That's...
No, I think... Here comes Spencer.
John won't let us.
John won't let us, all right.
Oh, John.
Spencer won't let us.
Spencer won't let us. Sure. No, man.
In conversation with the attorney around the budget time, it was determined that the items for life safety do not necessarily contribute to attracting tourism or, you know, promoting our village in that way. But as part of a downtown beautification type of program, in the same way that the hanging flowers and those kind of things contribute to the general aesthetics of the town and invite people, it was determined that the facade portion could be eligible to be used from the hotel motel taxes, and that's how it's been budgeted in this current year. So the $15,000 for the facade is from the hotel motel taxes. The $15,000 for life safety is just from general fund.
And I think your recollection, you know, is correct in that that's where that money originally came from.
When it was the state... When the state...
Yeah.
But it was also...I'm sorry to interrupt. The board created a development district for downtown pursuant to state statute, which was short of tiffing the downtown.
Right.
And that gave some extra authority to the village to implement programs like that.
But why do we budget for that life safety? I mean, that doesn't seem like it's a facade improvement, and as a guy who doesn't get any help on his fire alarm, I really question how that really works out to be fair for the rest of us when there's a life safety improvements in only the downtown as far as that grant. I understand the facade to improve the face of it, but I question how that...
That was a philosophical change a couple of years ago, several years ago by the board to expand, to allow, to help some of the owners of some of the structures downtown to make some of those improvements. It was just a decision by the board, a policy decision.
This seems like we took $15,000 of taxpayer money and only designated it for one area to help them with their fire safety issues.
It was for one area. It was for facade grants originally.
Well, facade...
And was it really expanded it and said, you know, we're going to make it eligible for these other things that would include these things like life safety improvements? So it was really an expansion, I think, of the original program concept.
Good. Thank you.
And going forward into future budget years, depending on the success of the TIF district, if it's adopted on Monday evening, we may have some opportunities to offset the burden to the general fund in the future by using TIF money for some of these infrastructure type of improvements.
Okay. But again, that's only in the designated TIF district.
In the TIF district, right.
And again, what trustee Barry is saying, the boards before felt that because we already had a definite area set up for the facade grant, that we just extended the life safety into that. Is there a reason, if we extended it beyond that, is there a legal reason, just out of curiosity, or is it just...
Well, I think now that TIF has kind of superseded that development district, you know, the board wasn't interested at the time in a TIF, so we looked at an alternative measure that would give the village board not only some control over uses that came in, thus the development permits, but also implement programs like the facade grant for downtown. It really was downtown-specific. Could you, you know, we'd have to go through some analysis to, I think, designate a new area or an expanded area adjacent, maybe, to downtown.
But it would definitely be connected to downtown. It couldn't be community-wide. I'm just throwing out, just as an idea.
Not under that particular statute. Is there another way to do it potentially? I'd have to look into that.
Okay. I'm just trying to follow up.
It would be nice, like you say, if there was $15,000, and if you were on 63rd Street, you could apply for it to help you out also, you know, as far as for the life and safety, not necessarily for the facade, but for the life and safety, you know? So...
And...
Obviously, been one of my main arguments with the TIF going forward, those funds keep telling us that we're going to be there, but the fire alarm ordinance is before the TIF. And obviously, that's been one of the things that I've thought that the cart went before the horse on that, but I'll leave it alone for now.
Okay. Trustee, we interrupt you again, Shannon, so...
No, I was finished, unless there are any questions.
Comments on this one from anybody in the audience? Trustees?
Nope.
No.
Looks good.
We'd have none. This will also be on the agenda for Monday evening. Thank you. We have a...one more development grant. 38 North Cass Avenue Downtown Development Grant Request. Manager Searle.
From Al Kohut of 38 North Cass for Al K Media Sound Memories in the amount of $149.50.
The petitioner presented a request to postpone this to a future board meeting, date to be determined. He's also looking at some awning improvements, which the committee did discuss last week, and he's working on a submittal with his contractor, a revised submittal. So with your permission, we would just like to table this to a future meeting.
Sounds good.
Postpone.
Will we postpone it to the July 11th?
He's waiting on his contractor. We did talk about that as a possibility. He wasn't sure he'd have a revised plan in time for our committee meeting next week.
Well, the motion can just postpone it generally, and whenever they're ready, staff can put it back on an agenda.
And we can always postpone it again if we have to.
Right.
So we'll put it on the agenda for Monday night to be postponed. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all the grant requests. We'll move on to E, Class II Liquor License. Manager Searle.
Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of Class II liquor licenses to accommodate a request by Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar located at 246 North Cass Avenue.
There they are.
And we have the petitioner here, as well as our chief...
Good evening.
...for our deputy chief, who is also the Deputy Liquor Commissioner.
Deputy Chief Gunther couldn't make it tonight for personal reasons. I have with me the three owners of Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar. They are going to be located at 246 North Cass Avenue. They are proposing a restaurant with a sit-down bar. They have applied for a Class II liquor license and a Class II liquor licenses for consumption of all alcoholic liquors based on their size to be consumed on the property and no packaged goods sales to relieve the property. They...we met with them on Sa...I'm sorry, Wednesday? Tuesday? Time flies when I'm having fun. Tuesday, we did an onsite inspection. Deputy Chief Gunther and I met with the owners, talked a little bit about their business. I'm proud to report that they are already a corporate sponsor for the upcoming Taste of Westmont. They'll be participating with that. We asked when their opening day will be, and we're...village is working very closely with them. Their original day was July 2nd, and we're going to be working closely with Kerry Kamak in the clerk's office to try to make that a possibility. If not, it'll be July 3rd, next Wednesday. Deputy Chief Gunther has done an intensive background investigation on the...based on the application for Neat Restaurant, and based on his background investigation, there's no reason for the mayor to prevent issuing this license. So with that, I would like to, and I will put up here on the overhead, if anyone is interested, and I don't know if I can...wrong way. What you're looking at is the floor plan for Neat Restaurant, and in case the owners wish to express or wish to identify that, so I will turn it over to them. They will give you a brief description of what their proposed business is going to be. We are looking forward to having in the business. They've experienced several delays that they wished they'd been able to open in the committee many, many months ago. Yes, but we're very happy to welcome them. So with that, I'll turn this over to...
Does time with this delay, does the new fee structure go into effect?
You're correct. With that, they will have the reduced fees.
So the delay was somewhat helpful, a little bit.
Yeah, to them it was. Yeah, well, I'll let them explain that.
All right. All right. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. This is much easier the second time around. So, yeah, the concept of the restaurant, we want to do a bar and grill, a neighborhood, family-friendly atmosphere. You know, we certainly don't want to be a bar-bar, and I think it's even turning into more of a restaurant than we expected as we were doing the build-out. I think this place turned out pretty nice, so... Initially, we were...we had...I know we had proposed we were going to have five to seven TVs. We're now only going to have two. We have a very distinct bar and dining room area to separate, you know, the bar from the area to keep in with the family atmosphere and that type of thing. We're hoping to be open seven days a week at 11:00 a.m., and on the weekends, we would like to be open until midnight, and on the weekends, 2:00 a.m., with the kitchen open the entire time to be able to serve food and serve late-night food. I think there's a definite lack of food outlets open late in Westmont, being that I live here.
True.
Yeah, there's Wendy's.
Tap House. One place, Tap House.
Yeah.
It's the only place you can get food.
Yeah, the Tap House is it. So we would also like to add to that as well. The liquor license is crucial to a business like ours. We are a 6,600-square-foot building with seating capacity for 150, and a restaurant that size simply would never survive without a liquor license, without being able to sell alcohol to sustain the business. And then that's really about it. You know, we've been greatly involved with the community and everything, and I also wanted to use this opportunity, too, to say thank you to all the members of the board and the village, the chamber, everyone in the development office has been nothing but helpful. Our neighbor Harold as well. Larry Forsberg has been a huge help, and Jill Ziegler and Jill Peterson and everybody. So we just want to use this opportunity to say thank you for that as well. Do you have anything to say?
No, not only just everybody in the village, but just the residents and the local businesses around us. Everyone's been very supportive, stopping by, seeing what we're doing, you know, offering us any helpful advice or anything they can do to help us get going, which has been very nice, very refreshing to see a village like Westmont that is...everyone says they're business-friendly, and you guys actually are, and it's very nice. We do appreciate that.
I apologize, too. We wanted to bring some visuals, but the place is kind of in shambles right now with the bad dash to get open, so there really wasn't anything worth taking pictures of.
You know, I have to say, I've had several people tell me, you know, you're saying how nice the residents are. I'm hearing so many wonderful things about you guys that, you know, they're walking by, and you're like, "Come on in, have a look," you know? So you guys have been just wonderful to our community, so we're looking forward to a really long relationship.
Yeah, we have visitors. We have visitors just about, because we are there, you know, all day, every day.
You've been very welcoming.
We have visitors stopping by, you know, a few every day, just to come and just come to check out, see what we're doing. They say, "When you open it?" And we can't wait to come in, so...
Ginny and I come, and they run. They're like, "Oh, no, they're back. They're back."
And I've been in a couple of times recently. Like, I've...
No, no, no. Absolutely not.
I will tell you this, guys. You know, Scott, your other neighbor, Westmont Tile and myself, we take a lot of pride in being the first ones at work and staying long hours, and we've had a personal competition for years, and we have been very impressed. Seven days a week, all three of your cars are working, working, working. So I'm not sure how the food and all that's going to end up being, but I know your work ethic is there, and I'm looking forward to having you guys, and great to have a relationship already.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
If I can ask about, we talked about this the other day, your health department, your inspection, that's going well? Because usually with the health department, it's a delay.
Yeah, everything, really surprisingly. The health department, Sandy, she's been really great.
Yeah, we've heard a lot of horror stories, and I've experienced a lot of horror stories with different health departments.
Terrified, first time she was supposed to come in. So, yeah, the health department, all our inspectors, the electric, plumbing, the building inspector, it really has been a really great experience, so, other than the delays.
Anything special, your menu?
Well, Dave is a butcher, so he was a butcher for 16 years, so all the steaks will be hand-cut, and the burgers will be ground in-house and patted by hand, which we'll take a lot of pride in. We'll have some great sandwiches, good burgers. Really going to focus on the lunch crowd, and with all the businesses in the area, you know, definitely want to focus on a good lunch crowd, good, quick lunch, get people in and out, so...
Good. Looking forward to it.
And I think we all, and I think Clerk Simmsky is looking forward to that installation dinner there on...
[laughing]
She was waiting to hear what day that you were going to say you're going to open. As long as it's before July 9th.
It is July 9th.
I know, as long as they open before July 9th.
They guaranteed me they would.
Yes.
They will be, absolutely.
She's the incoming Rotary President, so she's having her installation dinner at your place that evening.
Yeah, we're very excited to have her. And if someone wants to tell Dawn, if she ever wants to stop, then dinner's on us, so...
That's over $75.
That's a great story.
That's nice. Any other...anybody from the audience? Anybody who'd like to comment? If we don't see any, we will have that on for Monday night's agenda. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Class IV Liquor License.
Board to consider an ordinance to increase the number of Class IV liquor licenses to accommodate a request by Dottie's located at 6188 South Cass Avenue. And the petitioner is here, and I'd just like to point out there was some information passed out at your desk from the petitioner as well regarding their proposal.
Evening. Again, Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther and I met with Dan, who's here to my right, earlier this week. With you, you see a packet that Dan provided to us about Dottie's, and Dan will explain more about his business and answer any questions that you may have. In our interview earlier this week, we learned that Dottie's will be hiring seven employees. They've made an attempt to, or will make an attempt to, hire local, if not village, residents. Their hours of operation will be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That may change depending upon their business need. They will be building out the business, but will not be opening until they receive a gaming license later on this year. However, they are committed to coming to Westmont. They have applied for seven...they currently have seven other liquor licenses in other Illinois communities and have others several pending. So they are looking forward to coming and making an inroad in Illinois, and Westmont was chosen to be one of those communities. They are seeking a Class IV liquor license. Class IV is for beer and wine only, for consumption on the premises only. Again, the address that they will be moving into is on...I don't have it exactly in front of me, but it's in the mall by Westbrook Market, formerly occupied by the Skate Shack or something like that. 6188 South Cass Avenue. Here on the overhead diagram, you'll have...this is not the site plan for this. That's dependent upon the site, but this is their typical site plan, which you will see. And with that, I will turn it over to Dan from Dottie's to explain a little bit more about his operation and the need for a liquor license.
Thanks, Chief. Dottie's has been in business for 21 years. We have 150 locations open primarily on the West Coast, Nevada, Oregon, and Montana. We actually have about 25 liquor licenses here in Illinois. Fifteen stores or so are complete or substantially complete, another 10 or so under construction. Westmont would be added to that list. Dottie's is a unique business. It's, you know, we're kind of the anti...the opposite of a sports bar. We cater to a completely different crowd. We don't compete with any existing businesses in town. It's a 50-style Grandma's Kitchen. We've got a nice food offering, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. We actually, you know, we self-impose a four-drink maximum at the location, really to set the right precedence up front. As you can tell by the pictures, a lot of people, as you're explaining the business, the front page kind of says it all, the decor, how well-lit it is, nine, you know, high-definition security cameras. In all the years we've operated, we've never had a liquor license suspended, revoked, fined. It's not a place that DUIs walk out the door. It's not a place where the police would have issues from. We have a very loyal following, a real strong brand recognition on the West Coast, and we expect the same here. We typically locate in, you know, well-lit grocery-anchored shopping centers, Kroger and Walmart. Some of those larger chains have exclusively carved us out as the only use that...with chains have exclusively carved us out as the only use that, with our type of business, that they allow on their property, I like to think those big companies like that choose their partners wisely and carefully, so we've been vetted at very high levels, we've got, like I said, about 150 current liquor licenses in 100 and some different jurisdictions, so I'm the owner here in Illinois, I moved my family here to Naperville a year and a half ago, and, you know, I'm overseeing the expansion directly, I'm directly involved in the organization, so I'm here to present to you guys tonight.
And Chief, any comments from staff?
Again, Deputy Chief Gunther, Liquor Commissioner Gunther, has done an extensive background investigation on Dan and the management of Dottie's, and there would be no reason that he found that would prevent you from issuing this license. One thing, as we talked about, they will be applying for a gaming license, and they will begin their build-out, however, they will not open until they receive that gaming license, and any idea how long that would be?
You know, I'm thinking it'll be probably September or October, and that fits pretty well with us applying for a permit and completing our build-out, so it's probably within 30 or 45 days if that happens regardless.
We talked about this earlier, the state has been a backlog in issuing gaming licenses even with other applicants and businesses in town, and we understand that they're moving at a quicker pace than they had a few months ago, however, it's kind of difficult for us to be able to get an estimate as to how fast they will be.
So, what is the core business? What is the, the biggest percentage of your business comes from what?
You know, it's outside of gaming, so, I mean, even in Oregon where we exist, 50%, they have a 50% rule of all restaurant revenue, 50% or more of the revenue, it's come from something other than gaming, our typical location, 25 to 35%.
Would be gaming?
Would be associated with gaming, so.
So you're more of a restaurant?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a real nice variety, and folks come in to enjoy every aspect of it, our biggest mover, bar none, is coffee and diet soda, I mean, 25 to 1, the photo there, that's our smallest location that we would entertain, this one happens to be 600 square feet larger than that, so we'd be closer to 25 to 30 dining seats, to five video poker terminals, you know, very, very customer-friendly type establishment.
And looking at their applications, I noticed you are considering applying for Oakbrook, Darien, which would be neighboring communities as well, and I believe you currently have licenses in Lamont, so there are communities in this area where Dottie's will be located, we will not be the only one in Chicago, how many in Chicagoland area do you think?
You know, we're starting out with 40, you know, we really think, we, I don't know, in that packet, we were featured in Cranes two weeks ago, and mentioned with Jimmy John's and Chipotle and Five Guys Burgers as far as aggressive growth strategies, so we're thinking, you know, somewhere north of 100 locations here relatively quickly.
Do you have any open now, that we could do a little road trip and go check them out?
I can, I've arranged a number of meetings for trustees to tour a location and walk them through.
I mean, that are open for business?
Not yet, right, so August, you know, late August would probably be our first one that would, that would open, but if, you know, aside from, I'm happy to walk someone through the picture.
Would you fly us to like the west coast? No, just kidding, just kidding, very much kidding.
The photo on the front of that packet is actually our, that's the photo of our Melrose Park location, it's located in line with the food for us, so that's.
And that'll be opening soon, you think?
It's a Chicago location, that should be one of the ones in late August, opening, so.
It's really.
Specifically, where is 6188, which one is that?
It's on the, the frontage faces Cass Avenue, there's a physical.
Rusko, you know where Rusko is?
No, it's in the mall where Westbrook Market is, facing Cass Avenue, where there's a Skate Shack.
Right next to Rusko.
Right across the street from Speedway.
Next to us, the old Skate Shack, is that where?
That's, I believe that was the old place.
That's the old Skate Shack, okay, that's what I was trying to locate.
Yes, yes.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment? If not trustees, any additional? I don't have, no, it'll, if not, it'll be on the agenda for Monday evening.
Okay, great, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Agenda item G, under new business, 312-364 North Warwick, map amendment request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to rezone properties located at 312, 316, 320, 324, 328, 360, and 364 North Warwick Avenue, from R4 general residence district to R3 general family, I'm sorry, single-family detached residence district, and our village planner, Jill Ziegler, is going to comment.
Thank you. Village Staff is presenting a zoning map amendment to rezone properties from R4 multifamily to R3 single-family, in this section of town shown on the zoning map, from the apartments to the south at 312 to 316 North Warwick, to the north at 360 to 364 North Warwick on the south side of Melrose. R4 allows for multifamily, including condos and apartments, and R3 allows for single-family with 60-foot wide lots and minimum 7,800 square foot area. Staff feels that single-family is the most appropriate designation for these lots due to the single-family characteristics along Warwick, and because the village does not demonstrate a need for additional multifamily units, due to the comp plan recommendation for single-family in this area, the insufficient stormwater capacity in the neighborhood, which could be exacerbated by dense development, and when the moratorium in the northeast acres area, which is shown here in the blue, was put into effect in 2010 due to flooding, the board recommended at that time that the R4 zoning may need to be reexamined in this area. This was also asserted during the comprehensive plan process, which is why this block was recommended to be rezoned in the comp plan. The Plan Commission hearing last month involved public comment from several of the affected property owners, the owner of the apartment complex is not in favor of the rezoning for his property, the neighbors at 320 and 328 support the rezoning for the whole block, and the owners of 324 do not support the rezoning for their property. The commission unanimously supported rezoning all of the properties on the block to R3, from R4 to R3, except the apartment complex, they felt the apartments acted as a buffer from commercial, they felt this would not be a spot zone to keep the R4 designation at the apartments, and the apartments would be existing non-conforming if they remained as R4 anyway. Their vote was unanimously to rezone to R3 from 320 to 364 North Warwick, accepting out the apartments, and with that, Staff is available for any questions.
I remember talking about this, I think it's a no-brainer, I'm all for it.
Staff's recommendation on the apartment building, positives and negatives?
The, the comprehensive, you can argue both ways, I mean, the comprehensive plan recommends single-family, the, if you left it as R4, that means that, you know, you could see more multifamily there in the future, and the other opposition to that argument would be that it's existing non-conforming anyway under R4, so that density level wouldn't be supported, the apartment complex is about an acre, and they would need about three acres to do the 32 units that are in the complex now.
I think the owner.
So even if you left it, it's still non-conforming?
Correct.
I think the owner of the apartment building argued that the comprehensive land use plan promotes buffers between commercial and residential districts, and he argued that having an apartment building here provides a buffer because this is in with the comp plan, if you're looking for an opposite view.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to comment on this? If not trustees, we can, oh, come on up, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, you just state your name and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, county attorney, county officials, my name is Peter Gaddy, I'm one of the owners of the apartment complex located at 312 through 316 North Warwick, as a matter of fact, I was involved in the original construction of the building. Also with me this evening is Mary Ann Arzon, she managed the property for approximately 25 years. I thought it might be helpful if you knew a little bit about the history of this property. In 1967, this property came into the village via a pre-annexation agreement, that pre-annexation agreement was between the village and, I believe, Walter and Muriel Volkman, I never met them, I don't know who they are, they apparently owned the property at that time. They brought into the village not only the property on which the apartment building is located, but they brought into the village at the same time, under the same annexation agreement, the property which I refer to as the Engineers International Building, it's currently, you know, the large commercial building where the dance studio is located, and Pete Erickson has a business there, he's an event planner, and, by the way, he's been a much better neighbor than the previous engineering tenant, but that whole property was brought in as commercial property under the pre-annexation agreement. In August of 1967, the pre-annexation agreement was amended, and that was, it was amended to provide for a 32-unit apartment building, which would operate as a buffer between the commercial use that Mr. Volkman had planned and the residences to the north. That pre-annexation agreement was approved by the village board in, at two meetings in August of 1967. Subsequent to that approval, Mr. Volkman built the Pick 'n Save Grocery Store, I don't know if some of you remember that, but it was there for many, many years. After he built the Pick 'n Save Grocery Store, for some reason, the village refused to issue a building permit for the 32-unit apartment building, and he had already located the Pick 'n Save on his property so as to accommodate the future construction of this building. As a consequence, he was left no choice, he filed suit against the village, and that's the, and that lawsuit resulted in the decree, which I believe is part of your package. We were, Central Realty was the subsequent purchaser of that property from the Kaufmans following the entry of that decree, and we constructed the building, and it has been operated as such for the last 40 years. And I would like to explain to you the status of the property in 1974. In 1974, when it was constructed, there was the Pick 'n Save to the south, commercial use, to the southwest, there was auto repair facility, to the east was bacon commercial, to the northwest was multiple family, and to the north was single family. Well, today, if you go to the property, it's exactly the same as it was when the decree was entered by Judge Undersett in 1973, there's been substantially no change regarding the surrounding properties, the building today operates as a transitional use as it did in 1973 when it was constructed. What I'd like to do, I think, one of the things that was included in your memo were the factors that this Board of Trustees is required by law to consider when deciding to rezone property, and I'd just like to go through these very briefly and, you know, compare them to, you know, some of those considerations to what's really going on. First of all, the uses and zoning of nearby property, as I just finished explaining to you with the history, the existing uses of surrounding property support retaining the R4 zoning as it did in 1973. The next item, item B, the extent to which property values are diminished by the zoning restriction, our property values will be substantially diminished by the proposed Next item, item C, the destruction of property values in its relationship to promoting the public welfare, the rezone will not promote the general welfare of the community in any The issue of flooding has sometimes been raised as a reason for that, and what I'd like to do is to show you that our property, which is shaded in red and encompassed in green here, is heavily burdened by floodwaters that come down from the area of Cass Avenue. We have an existing retention pond, that existing retention pond is adequately sized to take care of the rainwater runoff from our property, but we are burdened by the undeveloped property to the east, there's almost a 10-foot slope, and I think you can see that on the, on the topo, from one point in the arrow to the other is almost a 10-foot drop, so we're heavily burdened near the bottom of the northeast acres basin, and the rezoning of our property will not have any effect on flooding in northeast acres. Finally, item D, the gain to the public as opposed to the hardship, again, no gain to the public, but hardship for the property owner. Next item E, the suitability of the property for the zoning use. Our property, surrounded by commercial, is just not suitable for a single-family residence. If the property were to be destroyed under your 50% rule, and you were to approve this rezoning, we could not reconstruct the building, we could only reconstruct a single-family home, this is not an appropriate location for a single-family home. Finally, this property has been zoned multifamily and in use for almost 40 years, there has been no corresponding change in property use in the vicinity of this building, which would justify any change in zoning. Furthermore, the continued use of the property as multifamily is consistent as a traditional, transitional use under your newly adopted master plan. Finally, I'd like to make a little bit of a comment about the fact that this property has been characterized as being an existing non-conforming property, the building may be non-conforming, but the use is conforming, it's being used as multiple family, and it's owned as multiple family, and as such, the use is conforming. You know, there may, I think a lot of buildings become non-conforming due to changes in rules, regulations, setbacks, but what really hurts the value of our property would be if the use became non-conforming, and I think your attorney can probably confirm that. Thank you, I'm open to any questions.
Just for the record, I can't confirm value because I'm not an appraiser, so I'm gonna keep quiet on that subject.
Any comments? No, again, appreciate your, your comments, is there anybody else? Again, come on up to the podium and state your name.
Bob and Mary Iverson, 320 North Warwick.
Well, since Bob and I have only about three minutes to speak, we're gonna try and make it quick, all we ask is that.
Three minutes.
At least that's my.
You can go.
Oh, we can go as long as we want, really?
Well, I might limit you to six.
You don't tell that to me. Anyone who knows me...
Tomorrow morning.
They're going to, the open forum portion, we limit it to three. On agenda item, we'll give it a little bit longer, so...
Okay. You'll be sorry you said that.
I think we just timed the last gentleman as a little longer.
Actually, all we ask is that you watch the June 12 planning and zoning meeting because we went into great detail. We did a lot of research at the library, DuPage County Courthouse, planning and zoning at DuPage County, and whenever records were available here at Village Hall, oh, and the library. Let me give you a picture here. Excuse the bad print. That was my old printer. It is an old picture, but for Bob and I, having our property rezoned from R4 to R3, it's kind of with mixed feelings because it should never have been R4 to begin with. But because of the apartment building that is directly to our south, it takes value away from us. It has, and it will continue till, you know, it's no longer there. There's the detention pond that was spoke of earlier, and you see what's happening when that fills up. But that's for one of the many flood meetings that I'm now going to come and attend. We have met with different realtors, and they all echo the same opinion. It's not going to be easy to see, but what they have basically said, this particular realtor put it in writing, which I don't think many would, but what they basically say is, "Your home is very nice, but with the building there, it will be difficult to sell and not for the same amount as the other properties in the area." When we first brought this to the village's attention, the comeback was always about, "Well, R4 is more valuable. It's going to get you more money." So we thought, okay, that's where the trouble comes in now with accepting R4. But it is the right, accepting the R3, but R3 would be appropriate. We 100% agree with it. In our opinion, the rezoning of all of the properties would be, to R3, would be appropriate. I also want to mention, too, that it probably should, we don't have the map there, but it probably should include the Melrose Townhomes. I know we went over this at the planning and zoning meeting because the rear to lots, parcels number one and two had been subdivided. The village was using an old map when they zoned us to R4, and subsequently, the properties that they were not aware of that had been subdivided on Melrose got sucked into that R4. And as that property sits right now, I can even flip back here. You can see here, here we got the, oh, yeah, the two properties. But here you can see the Ivanovich home. Their lot goes up to here. This is now the duplex, and the back portion had been split on Melrose, and now you've got the townhomes, which are clearly overbuilt for that parcel. So, you know, when you want to talk about at flood meetings and whatnot, where water is coming from, I can tell you right now, a lot of runoff there, a lot of runoff there on Lot 6. But that's another day. So anyways, we have no problem with the rezoning to single-family. Something's got to happen on that street. I think it's a very good place to jump off. Now, if the village wishes to retain R4 for the apartment building, for, on parcel five, for buffering reasons, we have no objections to that. But, again, small print here, but I took this off the village website. The property owners of that building will need to comply with the requirement that states, "Where a rear lot line in an R4 district adjoins a side or rear lot line in an R1, R2, or R3 district, there shall be provided," that's our backyard, "there shall be provided a six-foot-high solid fence on the R4 lot along such common lot line." And that's the only way I can see that we can at least try to get some value back to our property. That four-foot fence is not going to make it.
So if I can make comment on that point, that would be for a new structure in the R4 district that abuts residential. So this would not impact an existing property with an existing fence. That's something you'd have to go to the owner of the property or property manager and say, "Hey, can you do me a favor?"
Now, we got a problem because we're drawing a change in zone on two properties that are not going to be compatible. You've got R4, and it's going to abut R3. How's that fair? I mean, it's bad enough what is being sucked out of our property. We've got realtors that have told us that. I mean, I understand the legal, you're explaining the legal end of it, but I would hope our village, after this, comes to bat for us and gets involved. If I can, I remember the village a couple of years ago coming to bat for a builder over on Melrose for a certain fence that goes around the power plant. I would hope the village comes to bat for us on this one. We need something to help us. If we're going to take away R4 multifamily from our property, then we need something to make ours more sellable in the future. That's all I have.
So what you read, you said there was a six-foot fence. That's in the ordinance now, and it should have been done? Or is this something that she's just requesting?
No, that's something where if you're building a new building in the R4 district that abuts a residential district, you have to provide this fence, this buffering. That language does not apply at all to existing buildings, nor do any of our codes. So I think probably everyone's sympathetic. Yes, a fence would be a nice buffer. The apartment owner himself talked about buffering. But I think the response would be, code-wise, the village can't legally require it, and nothing prevents you from putting up a fence yourself or landscaping or something to buffer if the apartment owner is unwilling to do so.
All right, then I respectfully request that, go ahead and make that property also an R3, so we're all on even grounds here. This is very unfair. I mean, I understand...
That property, that building, they can't rebuild it anyhow.
They can rebuild, just not probably with that same footprint, if it stays R4.
But that's not going to help our property values today. That's the elephant in the room. Whenever a realtor comes over to assess our property, "Nice place you got here," but... So...
So it sounds like something the two property owners have to work out for themselves. Everybody gets what they want, but they've got to work it out between them two.
Well, like I said, then, I would hope that the village can take the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, both to speaking to our flooding issues, as well as not needing multifamily, and put us all on even grounds. My dad did not have a choice back in the 1970s. He was not allowed a voice. He didn't even know what was going on. This was done by the village, you know, with, my dad was not privileged enough to be zoned in as part of the annexation agreement, so he didn't know until that property started getting cleared out for construction, what was going to be sitting there.
Any other questions? If not, is there any, would you like, nope? I was going to say, yes, we'll entertain anybody else who'd like to come up and...
More support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, you're going to have to restate your name.
My name is Joe Hearn Cirque, and I'm a resident of the Northeast Acres. And when there was a homeowners association, I was one of the officers of the homeowners association. And part of the problem in that whole area there is the fact that 20 East Chicago Avenue is built to the maximum, almost coverage. I can't believe that that's less than 80 or 90% covered. 90-80 Naperville Road, they have that little area in front that used to be the road and that, and a small retention pond, but I'd say it's probably at 70% lot coverage. And this apartment building's probably at 80% lot coverage. So that's where we get a sheet flow problem. So as much as we can bring back into the R3 district, and also that property on Melrose with the townhomes over the next to the ComEd property is probably at 90% or 80% coverage, all of which is in a 30% zone because of the flooding by the county's mandate. So the problem is, anything we can do to minimize the zoning and construction at that end will help because eventually, somebody is going to buy what used to be the Checker, I believe, dealership property, and the vacant lot, the couple of vacant lots that are not owned by Commonwealth Edison, and will eventually want to build something on that property. Also, the 7-Eleven is probably at, I would guess, at about a 70 or 80% coverage, as well as, I don't know, Standard Mark, or Nature's Best Property flows over that way. I don't think that the watershed flows that way, so that flows into Flag Creek versus we all flow into Salt Creek. We're at the head end of Salt Creek there, essentially. So that's the issue with flooding. We want to keep the zoning to the minimum that we can, and obviously, the apartment building is there, and they have some sort of perpetual forever judgment. It seems to be akin to the thing that says that the state can get away with not funding education. I was trying to read that decision also. And I think we need to protect our community as much as possible because the neighbors in the west end of the Northeast Acres have a tremendous flooding problem along Warwick Street, and it's, any rectification is a huge cost. I've heard numbers up to $10 million to fix this. It'd almost probably be cheaper to buy some of these properties and just make a big basin there and eliminate the properties. I saw they're building a new home there, entering the recent rainstorms in April. The new home, water was all the way up to this new house they were building. And that thing's set way back on the property. It was almost up to the homes that are set way back in the 100 block. So anyway, that was just my general comment. I do support the idea of rezoning as much of that property as possible to R3 to prevent overdevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Staff, is there any comments after hearing the comments from the audience?
No, I'm going to put up an aerial photo, which kind of shows some of the things that everyone talked about. This is the ComEd substation. These are the townhomes that were built off Melrose, which Mary mentioned. This is the commercial to the south, and then these are the apartments that have been under the most discussion.
May I ask a question of Jill?
Yes.
As far as analyzing the trend of development, I forget how many parcels there are in this block that are under consideration for rezoning.
Right.
And the zoning's been in place, I believe, since 1981, the R4 zoning. How many properties have redeveloped under the R4 zoning in that time period?
Currently, it's just the duplex development at the corner, which has two units, one facing Melrose and one facing Warwick.
And the rest have remained as is?
Correct, yeah. So the development trend has been to stay single-family over this period of time.
If the apartment building stays R4, and the footprint would change if they would build a new building there, what's the lot coverage going to be?
It would still be restricted to 30%, assuming the moratorium would still be in effect.
Okay, so that's affected by that 30%.
Right. And then the, go ahead.
Lot coverage for R4 is, there is no lot coverage for R4.
For the apartment building...
So they have setback requirements, and they have stormwater management or engineering that would have to be done, but there's no lot coverage requirement for R4.
Oh, so they wouldn't be...
Wait, here comes Shannon. Tell me I'm wrong. Did we exempt that in the ordinance? Do we change that?
The moratorium area exempts that, so 30% is still referred to as R4.
Oh, okay.
It's in the moratorium.
Thank you.
So it is correct.
Okay. Now, again, that's supposed to be a temporary moratorium until such time as some stormwater issues get figured out, which I know the village is working on, so...
As was alluded to earlier.
Assuming this building, which could continue if the zoning were to change beyond the moratorium, then it could be built to that point, too, you know, without any lot coverage.
Additional questions, comments from the board? None? We will have this on the agenda for Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item H, under New Business, award of bid proposal. Manager Searle.
Were to consider an ordinance approving a bid and awarding a construction contract to the low bidder of ERA Valdivia Contractors for the south water tower tank repainting project. The village received bid proposals from five contractors, and ERA Valdivia Contractors' bid was approximately 30% below the engineer's estimate, and staff is recommending that we make that award. And our Public Works Director, Steve May, may have some additional comments.
Well, it's very well summarized. I'll just describe the project. The tank painting is, it's actually a special coating. It's both the outside and the interior of the tank gets coated, so the tank has to be taken out of service. And there's a lot of work with the sandblasting and the, you know, the removal of the loose materials in advance, that cleanup, and then the painting itself to put it back in service. So I don't know if there's any questions about that or the bidding, but...
How often do we do it?
Supposed to do it every 15 years is the design life, and we're about three years overdue on that right now. You can tell visually on the outside, on that style tank, where you have the big bulb on top, and then all the moisture that gets underneath and doesn't have direct sunlight on it or anything. You can see it's both dirt and mold that starts, you know, building up on the underneath. So we can do power washing in the interim, but the painting is 15-year design life. When you see the, on the attachment, there was two, there was actually two base bids. I shouldn't even bring it up because it was confusing the way it was wording, but there was also an alternative for a 30-year bid, and that's the ones that were all up in the $600,000, $700,000 price, and we're not considering that.
Any other, any comments?
Has to be done.
None from the audience, then be on the agenda for Monday night. Item I, adoption of revisions to the DuPage County Stormwater Flood Plane Ordinance.
Were to consider an ordinance adopting the 2013 DuPage County Stormwater and Flood Plane Ordinance Amendments. General certifications is an update to the countywide stormwater flood plane ordinance that was approved by their stormwater committee. This ordinance went into effect April 23rd. Corrects a number of errors, scrivener's errors, adds clarification, addresses some operational and organizational issues, and we are a partial waiver community, so we're required to make these adoptions. And Kim from Community Development here is to answer any questions, and I guess that does not answer.
Right, yeah, Ron pretty much said it all, so if you have any questions. They're pretty minor changes. They knew that, they adopted, they did a major overhaul of the stormwater ordinance in 2012. They knew that they'd have to make some minor changes, and so they expected to come back a year later and make these small changes.
Any comments from the board, questions? If not, it'll be on the agenda Monday night.
Okay, thank you.
New Business J, 2010 note, redemption.
Were to consider an ordinance authorizing redemption of the 2010 series general obligation notes that we had done refinancing on. Our finance director, Spencer Parker, will provide some additional details.
George, as we had talked about at a previous administration finance committee meeting, and then alluded to also at a previous board meeting, the board is interested, or has expressed some interest, at least in moving towards being able to issue some bonds for some infrastructure improvements. We talked about one of the steps towards that being adopting the Places for Eating Tax, which was done, and then the next step towards it, as was discussed, is paying off some of our debt. So as Ron mentioned, we had some debt from 2010, but we had it from previously, and then refinanced it in 2010. And at this point, we'd be looking at paying it off... then refinanced it in 2010, and at this point, we'd be looking at paying it off. It's reached a point where the principal is manageable. We have the cash that we can use to pay that off. We believe we can probably get it paid off just from our capital projects fund. If we need to do a short-term loan from our vehicle replacement fund to our capital projects fund, we have the cash there with no problem to be able to do that. As mentioned in the packet, there is a 1% penalty if we do it now, as opposed to if we wait till after January, when that 1% penalty would be gone. And that 1% penalty would be about $12,000, but if we wait till January, then we incur an extra $25,000 worth of interest cost. So it's wiser to take care of it now and just pay it off to save the interest. Over the life, the remainder of the loan, we'd be saving about an extra $80,000 worth of interest if we pay it off now. So it's a good decision, especially in light of, you know, the desire to move forward with bonds, but even without that as a desire, it's still a wise decision to do it this time.
Do it.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Sounds like a plan.
It'll be on the agenda, thank you. Agenda item K, declaration of surplus property, the fire department.
We're to consider an ordinance to declare certain unusable radio equipment from the fire department as surplus property. This property is in this state because of the implementation of our Starcom radio system, and the chief is available to answer any questions. And it would be, we would be directing us to sell this using online auction services? Is that--
That's correct. We're working with finance director Parker on the avenue that we'll be able to sell this equipment, but this equipment is no longer needed or be able to use since we instituted a Starcom system. This equipment was our old portables, old mobile radios from the vehicles, and some pageiers that we used to have and stuff where no longer can use it. We have checked, you know, through police, they're not able to use any of it in our EMA. They're not able to use it either, so we have no use for it.
So it's not the Starcom system that's not usable?
No.
Although it kind of reads that way here. So Starcom radio equipment is no longer usable?
No, it's because of the Starcom system.
I can see how you read that that way. That's not the way it was meant to be worded. It's because we have a very small number of characters that we could fill these fields and try to put as much information in there as we can sometimes.
I'm just blind to get it out there, that's all.
That's a limit of our system.
Are you pretty confident someone--
It was not very artfully worded.
Are you pretty confident we'll sell them?
I believe, I believe we will.
So there's still a need for these?
Yes.
Good.
Any other comments? No, if not, we'll have that on the agenda. Now, we can get to declaration of surplus property from the police department.
Yes, we're to consider an ordinance to declare unused property of the West Mountain Police Department as surplus. As many of you know, in 2009, we discontinued our K-9 program. We have been loaning equipment to the Naperville Police Department, and they have now requested to purchase that. So we're asking the board to declare that surplus so that we could make that sale to them.
I say do it.
Absolutely.
Answer any questions?
Didn't you say it was worth something like $400 or something?
Yes, it's been sitting collecting dust for the past two years, and we're very happy to get $400 for it.
Love it.
Any other questions? It's also on the agenda for Monday night. Thank you. Agenda item M, the hiring freeze.
As you know, the board has a hiring freeze that's been in place for several years, so this item is to consider a motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring a, it should say full-time police officer, not a full police officer, and a part-time--
I'll take the hit for that one.
And a part-time property control position, and in part, this is due to the, one of the retirements I referred to earlier. It has nothing to do with stopping off for doughnuts, right?
Stopping?
Off for doughnuts or coffee.
No. Currently, we just had a recent retirement. Sergeant Greg Compton is joining retirement, and now lose our sworn full-time staff down to 38 full-time officers. Fire and Police Commission is working and waiting to see if the hiring freeze, so they have one candidate that they are looking at, and their list expires August 30th. So they're looking for direction, and again, with the hiring, this would put us back to the budgeted full-time strength of 38 sworn officers. The property control position is one that we dealt with last year with our budgets. We used to, it used to be a full-time position, was traditionally was a full-time position, but in trying to keep our budgets under control and trying to make reductions wherever we could, with our reorganization of staff, we feel we can get by with a part-time property control person.
Any comments? None? Anybody from the audience? No? As Jill's shaking, said no. So you're sure?
We're--
I knew, state your name.
The board has a meeting scheduled Tuesday afternoon, so if you guys vote on it Monday, we can do that. We also are doing our testing. Our list expires August 30th. Our testing is September 14th, and we have a sergeant's list, and we've requested the material to make the promotion to sergeant that we need, and we will be looking at the people who are eligible on our list. We promote it to sergeant.
Great.
And that will be probably Tuesday also.
Thank you. Any, if not, that'll also be on the--
Perfect.
--agenda for Monday night.
Perfect.
Miscellaneous, are there any other miscellaneous items for this evening on the agenda? Seeing none, then I will, there is no further business. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation, pending ADS litigation.
So move Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addis.
Yes.
After the executive session, there will be no other further business conducted, so I will adjourn this meeting to go into executive session.